Okay, I'd like to reconvene from, reconvene to open session, the regular meeting of the City of Bellflower City Council and the Bellflower Financing Authority, Monday, February 14th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. And there was no reportable action for a closed session tonight. City Clerk, may you please call, roll please.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santinez?
Here.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here. And, City Clerk, could you please read the virtual meeting protocols?
Yes, thank you. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via their computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation.
All right, we have everybody rise for the invocation led by Mayor Protem Santi R. Santinez, and the pledge allegiance by our Director of Public Safety, Joel Aukman.
All right, let's bow our head in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for this great community and wonderful residents. We thank you for giving us dedicated staff. We thank you for members of our military, our first responders, sheriff, fire personnel, paramedics. Please keep them safe as they keep us safe. We also thank you for our health professionals for keeping us healthy. As we gather tonight to discuss the business of Bellflower, please enlighten us and give us the wisdom to decide what's best for the city. And as we celebrate Valentine's Day, please remind us to take care of ourselves, take care of our loved ones, and most importantly, take care of each other. We ask all this in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening, everybody. There should be an image of the flag appearing on the screen. And if you could face the flag and/or the image and join with me in saying, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Okay, I have nine city council announcements, and I'll go first. Each household of the United States may order up to four free home Rapid COVID-19 test kits provided by the federal government to be mailed directly to their home addresses. Ordering is available online at www.covidtest.gov. And tests typically ship within seven to 12 days of ordering. There is a limit of one order per residential address, and one order includes four Rapid and DeJant COVID-19 tests. All right, Councilmember Mayor Protem Santi Santinez.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. The LA County Public Health Department has a COVID-19 pickup testing kit program which allows residents to pick up a PCR test kit, perform the test, and return the completed test to designated sites for processing. Pickup testing kits will be available without an appointment and until data supplies are exhausted at designated locations. For more information on this program, please visit www.covid19.lacounty.gov. That's all. Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To help support local business owners, the City of Bellflower is highlighting local businesses in the monthly e-citizen newsletter by sharing business updates, special events, holiday celebrations, and more. Additionally, to show support for new businesses in the city, business owners can request a free ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate their grand opening and meet the Bellflower community. For more information on City of Bellflower business resources, please contact the Economic Development Department. They can be found at (562) 804-1424, extension 2010. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Raymond Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, good evening, Bellflower. The City of Bellflower previously launched www.bellflower.com, a digital gift card program to benefit both local businesses and customers. This program is still available through the end of March 2022. There are discounts up to 25% on purchases of $100 or more, and 20% discounts on purchases of $25 to $99. See, Bellflower merchants can register for free at www.bellflower.com. For questions regarding this program, please contact our Economic Development Department at (562) 804-1424, extension 2249. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Volunteer Center works closely with community groups, churches, service clubs, schools, organizations, and residents to provide spring baskets for our students in need. Partnering with Care and Connections through the Bellflower Unified School District, the Volunteer Center takes referrals from case managers who work directly with families in need. If you would like to be part of this important program to donate items for spring baskets, please contact the Volunteer Center located at Sims Park at (562) 804-1424, extension 2331, or by emailing michelnavarro@mnavarro@bellflower.org. Please note that all donations must be received by March 16, 2022. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. Okay, we have a presentation where as in 1976, African-American History Month was extended to a month-long observation during the month of February. And whereas the African-American History Month was originally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of this, of the history of the African-Americans, and to focus, and to focus on the stories and teachings of those who helped build our nation, advanced the cause of civil rights, and strengthened families and communities. And whereas the African-Americans have made valuable and lasting contributions to our country, state, city, and achieving success in all aspects of society, including business, education, politics, science, and the arts. And whereas, Bellflower residents are encouraged to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continued efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Therefore, I, Ray Dutton, Mayor of the City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim February 2022 as African-American History Month. Signed by myself, Mayor Ray Dutton, Mayor Protem Santi Santinez, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, Councilmember Dan Coops, and Councilmember Victor A. Sanchez. And here is a present, if you have the camera can get it, of the proclamation for African-American Month, okay? And there's, because we're on Zoom and the new rules with what we're at, we don't have a physical presentation tonight. Okay, then our second presentation is Students' Recognition for the Community Recycling Artwork Contest. And Kevin Sales from KJ Services is going to share a presentation of the student recognition for the Community Recycling Artwork Contest. Ms. City Clerk, will you please allow Mr. Sales to share the screen for us?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Let me see if I can pull up the screen here. Okay. Oops, one moment. Let's do that instead, okay. Hopefully you can see that. Are you able to see the screen?
We can see it and we can hear you.
Oh terrific, thank you very much. Well, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak this evening. I'm sorry we're not able to be there with you. I noticed that we have some of the students, as well as their parents and teachers, here with us. So I wanted to share with you our 2022 calendar. This calendar features artwork done by 14 very talented students in the city. So let me go ahead and show you what they've done. This is the artwork. This is our grand prize winner, Natalie Guian. Out of 240 entries, Natalie was chosen as the grand prize winner. Her art is featured on the cover, as well as on the first inside page. And Natalie is a student over at Foster Elementary School. This is Natalia Campos's artwork from Washington Elementary School. Very happy this year that we have winners from all the elementary schools in the Bellflower Unified School District. They did a fantastic job. I think the hardest thing was choosing the winners. This is Jeno Aziz's artwork. She was our second prize winner this year. And these calendars basically are based upon a presentation that the students receive in the fall about recycling, particularly recycling in our city, and asked to participate in the art contest. And as I say, we got 240 entries this year, and these are the winners that are featured in the calendar. This is Julio Zavala's artwork. Julio is from Woodruff Elementary School.
Hello.
And he's featured in the, in the calendar this year as well. This year, we were very fortunate. We were able, since the students were in school, to go and do some presentations. This is Arlie Vega's artwork from Baxter Elementary. We were able to go to the schools, present the winners with a certificate of achievement from the city council, along with some prizes and awards. That was really nice to have an opportunity to recognize them in person at their school. This is Samantha Lopez's artwork, also another student from Foster Elementary School. Did a terrific job, as all the students did. By the way, I can't recall if I mentioned, we've been doing this competition for more than 20 years. I believe this is actually our 23rd calendar that the city has produced through this program. This is Addison Mee's artwork. Addison is a student over at Ernie Pyle Elementary School. Also, like all the others, did a fantastic job sharing their ideas about how to inform people about recycling here in our city. Vivian Nunez from Foster as well, another student, talking about recycling, but also keeping litter out of our community, which is very, very important as well. Those two go hand in hand. So Vivian did a terrific job with her art as well. Kendall Inn from Ramona Elementary School, her artwork. You know, and while I'm showing these artwork, I want to say thank you to the teachers and the principals. They've always been very supportive of this program to allow us to come into school, make the presentation. They've always been very open to the message and being part of the program, and that's really what's made it successful. This is J.D. Marino's artwork from Baxter Elementary School, reminding us to recycle for a better world. It was really nice to go out and talk to the students. It's interesting, when you make the presentation, then you see the artwork, all the creative ideas the students have. Alyssa Rodriguez, Alyssa's with, from Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, another one of our 14 top winners. Sofia Rosales from Listrom Elementary School. All the artwork is great, but I really like Sofia's because she spells it out for us. For every letter in recycle, she's got another reminder, so did a terrific job there. And these calendars, by the way, are available in the city. So if you see this artwork and you really want a calendar, I'm going to give you the insight, just a second. This is Ethan de la Torre's art. Ethan is from Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. These calendars were delivered to the schools, so if anyone's listening would like to get one, there may still be some at the schools. There was also a supply delivered to the district, as well as there are calendars available at the Public Works Yard in the city. And last but not least, this is Althea Dimasque's artwork from Craig Williams School. So she's featured on the back cover of this year's calendar. Another terrific job. So in summary, this is just a very quick recap of the 14 winners for the 2022 Bellflower Community Recycling Awareness Calendar. If you haven't got your copy, I encourage you to go get it. It's only the middle of February, so we've got a lot more 2022 ahead. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that completes my, my presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and great presentation and great calendars.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on. Item 10 is public comments. Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, this is the time to set aside for the public to address the city council matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda item must utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated shall, well, it's not finished here, the remainder of that may be removed from the meeting, is what it's going to say, roughly, or disconnected, but yeah, I don't, it didn't finish the statement, but that's the.
You got enough?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Do we have any public, public comments this time, Ms. Clerk?
If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature. If by computer, it appears under the Participants tab. If by phone app, it will appear under the More button at the bottom right-hand corner. Or if by telephone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. You'll be called upon in the order received. You can then unmute your microphone so that you can provide your comments.
All right, do we have anybody raising hands yet?
Yes, Mayor, I've got a raised hand for Mr. Whitehead. Mr. Whitehead, if you could, please identify yourself with your full name.
Yes, I'm Mr. Whitehead, and I'm following up on the March 22nd, 2021 meeting, where it was indicated there'd be the possibility that we could opt out of the organics recycling. And when I spoke to CRNR, they didn't really seem to be prepared for that. Was that properly communicated to them?
Let's see, is the, Len Gurecki, there you are. You know that contract, In-N-Out, I believe, if I recall.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, I, when we did the protest hearing back in March, I believe this question came up, whether or not residents would be able to opt out. And we said if CalRecycle, who's the state agency that oversees the organics and the waste hauling for the cities, if they found it feasible and there was an exemption plan that was in place with CalRecycle, then this would be something that we would consider. At this point in time, CalRecycle hasn't indicated that they've put in place any type of an exemption program for especially residential accounts. Based on the way the state law is right now, everything is still a requirement for us. So the organics is a requirement. The state, to the best of my knowledge, hasn't worked through an exemption process that the cities can utilize with the, with their various accounts that they have. So that's where it stands right now.
Thank you, Mr. Director.
And with the.
Go ahead, Mr. Whitehead.
And with the current cart package, we're able to have two green bins, two recycling bins, and then the one regular trash bin?
One green bin. You can utilize the green bin for your, for your organics and your green waste.
Because when I spoke to Mr. Kwawu, he gave me the impression that part of the package could have two recycling bins and two green bins as part of the monthly rate, or the bimonthly rate.
No, I'm not aware of that. It's, it's one single green cart bin that you can utilize for both your organics and your green waste.
And for the recycling bins?
Well, you still have a normal recycle bin. You have your, your blue bins.
So how many total carts could be available at the bimonthly fee?
Three.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Whitehead, is that answer sufficient for you?
Well, it'd be good to know what, what's going on with the state process for enabling people to opt out if they've got compost pits.
I understand that. If you, I mean, there's no monitor looking in the, in the trash, the green waste bin, we're just mixing it with it. If it's got organics, it's got organics. If you choose to do something else with your organics, that's, I'm sure that's perfectly okay.
Well, but we're currently being forced to purchase a service we may not need or desire.
Oh, okay, so you're, you don't want to pay for a green barrel?
Correct. Yeah, he's, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Whitehead, but you compost your, your own organics, so you're trying to opt out of the fee portion of, of the bill for the.
That is correct.
Yeah. And again, the state hasn't established any type of an exemption plan yet. The state's really behind the eight ball in this one right now. They're, they're, they're a little far behind with, with SB 1383 being put in place. There's a lot of cities that are trying to chase it down right now. We've been talking about it for several, couple, at least a couple of years now with the council, and we took the, the steps that we took to incorporate it as part of our rates. But CalRecycle's, they're, they're just a little bit behind. We'll, we'll reach out to them again and see if they have any type of a plan that they're going to allow cities to, to do exemptions. But certainly for residents, if there, if there is an option to do it and it is feasible with, with CalRecycle for us to implement, we're more than happy to implement these programs. We just got to get the state to approve it. But right now, as everything is written, this is a mandatory service, and it's built into the rates of everybody.
Okay, so we might as well just throw our food waste in the green bin for the time being until we can opt out?
Yes, that's the requirement.
That's your best choice right now. You're paying for that service, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehead. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Yes, Mayor, I have a raised hand for Jen Gonzalez.
All right, Jen, Ms. Gonzalez, go ahead.
Hi, yes, my concern is, I don't know if it's on the agenda, to be honest, I try to look at it. We were getting some permit parking on Laurel and Orchard, and that was supposed to be discussed, and I wanted to vote in yes for that. We have a very terrible situation on this street. We have very many apartments, and we have people that live in one house that have over four or five cars, and I think it would benefit our local area. I've also been trying to implement some red curbs in the area because there's, there's a bad intersection on Flower and Laurel itself, and to make a left out of there, you're just taking your chances. And I'm just, I'm getting backlash because I'm doing some of the improvements, and so the residents are getting upset. And I wasn't the one that initiated this permit thing, but I am for it because I can't even put my trash cans to the curb. So that goes into the other area where you guys were just speaking about the extra bin. I'm lucky I can have two bins out there, honey. They take my bins and put them up on the thing, and we had a red curb put out just so we can get in and out of our driveway because there wasn't enough space between the telephone pole and that, and they keep moving our trash cans, and then our trash doesn't get picked up. So now you want food that's rotted in the summer to sit there? That is going to be very disgusting.
They don't respect my red curb either.
Yeah, Ms. Gonzalez, we totally understand of what you're going through, and it's usually what's why these.
Well, you know, one thing that I'm very upset with, and I will say, it comes from public safety, that you guys need to probably speak with them, that they have this saying of saying, "If the tire is not in the red, they will not ticket the vehicle." I call that is not correct, or the penal code for ticketing in the red. If the vehicle is in the red, the bumper's in the red, it should be ticketed, and your enforcement officers refuse to ticket each vehicle that sits there on Laurel Street every day. Every day, there's somebody in there right now.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is Joel.
Yes, Joel, yes.
Yeah, the item about the permit parking, that's actually on the agenda for tomorrow night's Public Safety committed, commission. So there may be some confusion on that. That's a tomorrow night issue, and we'll be dealing with it there.
Okay, I called in, and they said it was going to be on tonight, so I specifically didn't do anything for my Valentine's Day, but no big deal. How do I tune into that? Because I'm very interested, because I really want to see this happen, because they have way too many cars. I'm talking, there's two families, and they have over eight to 10 cars on this street, and they have garages, and it's really ridiculous.
Right, the same posting on the city's website.
Okay.
Will, will provide the instructions for tomorrow night's meeting.
Okay.
Seven o'clock.
Okay, sorry about that, I apologize.
That's okay, Mrs. Gonzalez, you know, look at it, this is a dry run. We were all scrambling up here, and I thought it was the wrong meeting you were talking about.
Sorry, I appreciate it.
That is okay, and wins, you know, already, I believe, that the, the application was put out there for the permit parking. And Joel, correct me if I'm wrong, was 60% already achieved?
Yes, for the district that's being proposed, it's very, very small district, kind of unusually small, and so that's going to be something for the commission to chew on.
And Mrs. Gonzalez, are you in the proposed parking district, or are you just?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, because sometimes what? Go ahead.
I really wanted to propose they do a one-way street here, because it's just so narrow that these, these cars, they, they just feel entitlement, and you're coming down the street, instead of them pulling over, they'll just try to pass by you. Now I'm trying to pass by four cars on this skinny, narrow street.
Well, let's take one issue at a time.
Okay.
All right, but what you're going to see once this happens, if this, if this goes through with the planning commission, is it pushes the problem up the street a little bit, and then they'll be doing the same thing if this goes through, is what happens. They chase, it gets chased a little bit, but that's, that's just the beast.
Sorry for being off topic, I do apologize.
That's okay. All right, thank you for your comment.
Thank you, you guys have a good evening. Happy Valentine's.
Anybody else on, with their hand raised?
Mayor, I see no further raised hands at this time.
Let's move on to, you know, we don't have any public hearings tonight. We don't have any orders, order, ordinances or resolutions for consideration. So item 13A, a consideration and possible action to review and confirm and affirm the non-ownership letter submitted by Dynasty Alliance Grow, Inc., meets the conditions of approval for its 2022 cannabis business permit, known as CPCBP renewal. And may I have the staff report, Mr. Stewart?
Sure, that'd be, Mr. Seis will have the staff report for you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I will give a brief verbal report of item 13A, which is before you deny to review and confirm that an affirmation of non-ownership letter submitted by Dynasty Alliance Grow, Inc., meets the conditions of approval for its 2022 cannabis business permit renewal. And this is also referred to as a CBP renewal. So this past December, the city council considered annual CBP renewals for current permatees in the City of Bellflower. And following the discussion on the renewal of Dynasty Alliance Grow, Inc.'s CBP for a cultivation use at 8832 Ramona Street, the city council determined, among other things, that Mr. Yohan Leon will need to be live-scanned and vetted as ownership, as defined in the cannabis regulations, due to his, believe, involvement in the permatee. So in response to this condition of renewal, Bernice Cristerna of Dynasty Alliance Grow, Inc., initially submitted a document on January 5th, 2022, and this was entitled, "Renunciation of Dynasty Alliance Grow, Inc.," which was dated January 4th, 2022. And it was signed by Mr. Yohan Leon Vargas and notarized. And then on January 10th, the city attorney reviewed the document and advised that it did not meet the requirements of Dynasty CBP. A copy of that document is attached to the staff report for reference. So thereafter, Ms. Cristerna submitted a notarized affirmation of non-ownership letter on February 1st from Mr. Yohan Leon Vargas, which is dated January 31st, 2022, indicating that Mr. Yohan Leon Vargas has no equity interest in the company, and that he has no right or intention to participate in the direction, control, or management of Dynasty Alliance Grow, Inc. And additionally, Mr. Vargas states in the letter that he holds no equity interest in the company BNY Enterprises LLC, and that company owns the real estate property located at 8832 Ramona Street. And it also states in the letter that he has no right or intention to participate in the direction, control, or management of BNY Enterprises. Copy of this letter is attached to the staff report for reference. So it's staff's understanding that Dynasty Alliance Grow, Inc., submitted these letters to satisfy the condition of renewal pertaining to Mr. Yohan Leon Vargas needing to be live-scanned and vetted as ownership, as defined in the cannabis regulations. And the city manager and... And the city manager and city attorney have reviewed the affirmation of non-ownership letter and believe that it satisfies the cannabis regulations and CBP conditions of approval regarding Mr. Vargas's lack of ownership. So accordingly, the city attorney sent the permatee a letter, which is dated February tenth, twenty twenty-two, outlining the city's understanding regarding this matter. And this letter is also attached to the staff report. And as noted in the city attorney's letter, the city may revoke the CBP if it discovers that Mr. Yohan Leon Vargas, his assurances were false or misleading. So therefore, staff is recommending that the City Council confirm that the affirmation of non-ownership letter submitted by Dynasty Alliance Grow Inc. meets the conditions of approval for its twenty twenty-two CBP renewal. And all other conditions of renewal were satisfied by Dynasty Alliance Grow Inc. So that completes my report. Staff, the city attorney and Ms. Christina are available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I get to questions from the council, do we have anybody in Zoom land that is logged in for, is like Bernice or Yohan there? Bernice is there? Okay, got it. Because we don't have that. Anyway, any questions from the council at this time? Mr. Hamada?
Not a question, but just a quick comment, just to clarify something, just in, again, reading the report and again, it looks, you know, complete, but it is my understanding that Mr. Yohan Leon and Mr. Yohan Leon Vargas are the same individual. So it's just, it was just some of the typing that was missing, so that's all. That's his comment.
Got it. Santaynez, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Seis, just for housekeeping purposes, in the December ninth meeting, there were two conditions, if I recall correctly, that were given by the city.
That's correct. There was actually three conditions.
Three conditions, okay. Namely, the the ownership issue, the vetting issue, and then the receipt of the state license. So let me start with the state license. Are they current now with their state license?
That's correct. They are current and they provided the proof of valid state license.
Okay, very good. Now, with regards to the Mr. Yohan Leon, who was identified as a key personnel back then in December ninth. And you mentioned that there was an affirmation of non-ownership documentation. Is this on page five of the staff report? Is this the final documentation from them? Because you also alluded, there was a question from the city attorney related to that affirmation of non-ownership.
So the title of the letter that was provided by Ms. Christina from Mr. Yohan Leon Vargas was affirmation of non-ownership. And there was also, in addition to the other two conditions for Mr. Yohan Leon being live-scanned and also the proof of valid state license. They also had to provide a certification, which was in a form approved by the city attorney and signed under penalty of perjury in accordance with the laws of the state of California. Just confirming that there was no ownership change between the originally issued CBP and a renewed CBP unless it was approved by the City Council through a modification application. So that certification was provided also from Ms. Christina stating that there was no ownership change.
Okay, just for the benefit of my colleagues here, I gave the city attorney that letter, that certification. And what I suggested is that, because in that certification, it only certified there was no change in ownership. What I strongly recommend is, on the face of that letter, to clearly specify the meaning of ownership per our resolution because in the last, in the December public hearing, there was some kind of misunderstanding in terms of what ownership is, how ownership is defined. So I would strongly suggest to add that on the face of that letter that they are signing under penalty of perjury. So it's clear that ownership doesn't mean only ownership of business, but also management, control, administration. So just for the benefit of my colleagues, I asked the city attorney to do that. Ms. Christina, can you comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We did have that discussion. I have discussed it and it will be implemented. I completely agree with your observations on that.
Okay, very good. I think that's all my question for now. I'd like to ask a question with Ms. Christina when she is available.
We'll finish our questions, because I might draw another question. Mr. Sanchez, do you have any questions? Mr. Coops? All right, let's, I don't have any questions at this time. I think we want to talk to Christina Bernice.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good, all right.
Good evening.
How are you tonight?
I'm doing well. How about yourself?
Good. I think our mayor pro tem had a question for you.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Ms. Christina Bernice. Thank you for participating in this meeting. And thank you for working with staff to kind of clear all those issues that were raised at the December ninth meeting. In the December ninth meeting, and I really want to express my appreciation, all the affirmation that you submitted to the city. I know that you're trying really hard to make sure that you are compliant. Let me just preface my statement right now because before I ask you the question, I'm asking these questions because when we proposed this cannabis business to our residents, we committed to our residents that we will vet the owners, including the management of the business, to make sure that they're good citizens. That's basically the bottom line of my questioning. Because we don't want to renege on our commitment to our residents to make sure that our operators are well-vetted and, if I recall correctly, we promised them that they're going to be fingerprinted, they're going to be live-scanned, all these things, background check, to make sure that really the operators are good citizens of Bellflower. So in the December ninth meeting, when I asked you the question about Mr. Yohan Leon, you reminded me of the words that you used, that he's your partner. He is everything in a business. And when I asked you the question about, is he a key personnel, you answered affirmatively. You were practically married, although Mr. Coops followed up the question, are you married? And you said no, but.
Correct.
You remember that? Okay.
Yes.
And then, and then at some point in time, you mentioned also that you were like husband and wife. So I'm just going to go direct to the point. From that, from your testimony that evening, to the affirmation that Mr. Yohan Leon provided now, can you reconcile those two? Because I think I'm missing something.
Well, no, I think it was a misunderstanding. Basically, the bottom line, we separated two years and a half ago. And we discussed the separation of everything and we came to an agreement and we have signed documents. So the separation, we never married, but we came to an agreement of the businesses and some property that we have. And the reason that I said he was a support system, it's not in the business at all. I manage it, run it, control everything a hundred percent. It's basically, we remain good friends and in our personal life, he has been supportive of me and that's the only thing I said. But management and the property is a hundred percent mine. I run it, I'm there seven twenty, twenty-four seven. I do everything. I've learned so much in these two years and a half. And basically, I think it was a little misunderstanding on probably my end, how I worded everything. But no, I'm running a hundred percent the company. I own a hundred percent of the property. And the letter, clearly, when Yohan and I sat down, it was all very clear. And he, you know, never hesitate to sign whatever we wrote on the letter along with the attorneys because that's how, what we, the agreement that we had already for over two years and a half.
Okay, thank you for your response to that. I would say that I trust you, Ms. Christina. But at the same time, there is that cloud hanging over your head, as far as I'm concerned, because of the discrepancy in your testimony. Because I trust your words that you used back in December ninth last year. And I really want to give you the benefit of the doubt and let you continue this business. But I still have this kind of doubt, this cloud hanging over. So I would like staff, if they have some recommendation, as far as how we can address that issue.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll take up that offer. Based upon the discussion, at least from the mayor pro tem, it appears that the letter that was submitted is not completely sufficient to satisfy at least one member of the city council. And if that's the case, there's only one additional step that I could think of to recommend and that would actually be to have a court order entered with regard to the matter, which would prevent Mr. Vargas from participating at all in conducting the business. There is a way of doing that. It's basically a settlement agreement. It's a friendly lawsuit, if you will, whereby the city would file a lawsuit and enter a settlement agreement on the same date, as long as the operator were amenable to that. And that's really the only way that you could have something that I could use to be definitive about the lack of participation by Mr. Vargas. I could alternatively try to work around and actually implement right for them. Their certificate, that would satisfy the city council, but really the court order is the only way that you could have a definitive conclusion to the question.
Okay, all right, Bernice, did you hear the suggestion by our city attorney?
Yes, sir.
Are you okay with that suggestion?
Of course I am.
Okay, all right, very good. With that, I'm a happy camper. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So Bernice, I guess you already said that you were good with it, but it's kind of, it's kind of a little bit confusing as with another layer of security over your permit. So with what you've said, as you're willing for it, I'll have the city attorney draw something up. Do you need to draw something up on that? Or is it something you do in-house? Without a courtroom, you just record it?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just need the authority from the city council to initiate litigation and then enter into a settlement agreement at the same time. Like I said, it would basically be filing a lawsuit on the same date that we're also filing a settlement agreement. And at that point, there would be a court order that would be entered that could be utilized to make sure that it was a belt and suspenders approach to the entire affair.
If the council, remember, we use the same mechanism when we settled the lawsuit with Catholic work.
Right, yeah, the Catholic.
A friendly lawsuit.
Yeah, but there was a judge involved in that. I don't think there's a judge involved in this.
Oh, no, there's definitely a judge involved.
There will be a judge involved, yeah.
So there is a court date?
Correct. Once, we would, it would be a stipulated settlement agreement and so there would be no hearing. But there would be a signature from a superior court judge on the court order.
Enough? Are we okay with spending the money for that?
Would it take a lot of time or?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my suggestion, as with anything dealing with your cannabis permits, is that the permatee pay for all costs associated with it. That's a requirement of both the municipal code and the permit conditions.
Gotcha. Let me ask Bernice. Bernice, did you hear that? There might be fees, there will be fees accordingly? And are you okay with paying them?
I think I'm going to have to be okay with it, yes. So we can move forward. I know it's, just if you could use the best rates as an attorney fees. A discount.
So who want to put the cheap attorney on, is what you're saying?
Thirty, forty thousand dollars will cover it.
Gotcha.
Yes, of course.
I just wanted you.
To meet this, correct.
I just didn't want to, you know.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm not a water law attorney, so they're not that.
I just didn't want to throw something at you that you didn't know about and I just wanted to put it on the table. Thank you so much, Bernice.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Is there any other questions to my colleagues that arose on this discussion?
Victor's got something.
No, you're good.
So I would go with staff recommendation, just amend it to allow the city attorney to draw up the documents necessary to enter into the agreement with Ms. Christina on the status of Mr. Leon Vargas and initiate litigation.
Yeah. That's an important part also.
So would somebody like to make a motion to confirm the affirmation of the non-ownership letter submitted by Dynasty Grow Group that meets the conditions for its twenty-two CBP renewal, along with the added discussion that we had about the friendly lawsuit?
I'll make that motion.
A second motion?
Motion on the floor by Councilmember Coops and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Sunny Santaynez. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Santaynez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye. Okay, item fourteen, we're down to the consent calendar. Guys, we're in the home stretch. Any recusals or conflicts?
Mr. Mayor, I'm out on fourteen H since I have property located near Sims Park.
H. Anybody else? Looking at your cheat sheets, guys? Because I am. See if, nope, that was it. That's all we got on there. Okay. Any items need to be pulled for separate discussion?
Where for?
Well, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
And that would be with Coops out on letter H. We've got a motion on the floor by Coops and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Santaynez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye. Councilmember reports, you have anything, Mr. Coops?
Yes, I want to thank all those that participated in my outgoing mayor ceremony. Forty-eight books were delivered to the Ramona School Library last Tuesday by city staff.
Wow.
And in addition, Fred Taylor, of course, participated. He brought four. And past Mayor, Mr. Garza, Juan Garza participated. He gave about six books. So I want to thank all of you publicly for helping our kids in our great city at Ramona School. Books are always read, but more importantly, books are lost and books are taken and books are wrecked. So it was a good influx to have almost sixty books brought in there in the last ten days. So that was my report.
Thank you, past Mayor Coops. All right, Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say happy Valentine's to everyone. That's it.
Mayor Pro Tem Sunny Santaynez.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I hope that you enjoyed yesterday's Super Bowl game. I really enjoyed it. I also want to thank our Public Works Department and our contractor for completing the reslury of Clark Avenue and with striping. I think it is very nice. And also last Friday, I attended the community outreach meeting at Sims Park to discuss the the parking features, the additional parking features at Thompson Park and also the new park at Constitution Park. And I'm inviting our residents to please come to this meeting. There's going to be more meetings scheduled at Constitution Park of Thompson Park. It is our opportunity to provide our input. So we had a good time. I shared my input with the other participants. There were about, I think about seven residents who came to the meeting at Sims Park last Friday. So please come out in one of these meetings. And finally, today, I attended a regional job fair at Norwalk sponsored by the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development, of which the city of Bellflower is a member. Very good turnout, over forty employers were looking for employees. And by the time I left at about ten o'clock, there's more than one hundred twenty job seekers already. So hopefully, we can sponsor more of this job fair among the members of the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development. So that's all, hi, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamada?
All right, save some time for me. Look at SCAG updates. I just wanted to give you a short report of this month. Look at SCAG updates, I just wanted to give you a, again, short report, this month, I was able to attend the joint session of the committees, and we were able to hear the, the, you know, preliminary, you know, regional and county growth projections to, you know, 2050, and at this point, it looks like it'll be in the range of the middle growth, so it's, it's still a considered slow growth period, but it's still steady improvement. With the regional council, I was able, we were able to approve the regional early action planning grant program, and this this actually kicks off funding, it's the first 10% of the overall monies that's presented, so to a tune of, right now, you know, 10% means 24 million bucks, so. And that's to start some, again, outreach, some of the early studies, again, also to expand the, you know, connect SOCal implementation programs. I'm also honored to participate with the SCAG team, to meet the Swiss Switzerland officials on the rail program, and we've been meeting the last couple of weeks, we have two more meetings, and we are hopefully learning some of the, you know, potential pointers to hopefully have a successful rail system here in California. We talked about funding, ridership, you know, collaboration, also security, and just some of the comments we've heard from the Swiss people, they say crime on their rails very rare, so that's, that was quite a surprise. I was the one that asked that, and I was totally knocked off my seat, so to speak. They're saying that the fare box should cover 50% of the cost, and that's, that seems really high, and that's something, I don't know how that's maybe going to work here in California. And the Swiss says, you got to put money into the system, so right now, they're planning to put $25 billion into the system by 2035, so they are committed to, you know, doing rail, and one of the, one of the promotions that they're presenting is the sort of one ticket, one journey, sort of like the one seat we're trying to do here, you know, for the metro, so it's, you know, quite enlightening, it's a 10-hour difference, so everybody's sometimes confused, we're first thing in the morning, they are just wrapping up work, and so we're all trying to move forward, but we have, we have a couple more sessions, and looking forward to a wrap-up at the end of the month, so, all right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. And I just want to say, it looks like our heat is over, it's going to rain tomorrow. Talk about a party pooper. Joy, what's some weather this weekend? I was tired of getting cold all winter. But with that, I want to adjourn our meeting, meeting to the next regulator, regular council meeting of the Bellflower City Council at 5:30 PM on Monday, February 28th, 22. We are adjourned.